We'll call this meeting the Christiansburg Town Council to order. As always, we will observe a moment of reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Let's rise and pledge allegiance. I want to ask Councilman Henry Showalter to build a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? There are none. We will go into public hearings. 2018 Town Christiansburg Committee Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Is that Mr. Warren, Mr. -- okay.
Yes, as you're familiar, each year with the Health Development Block Grant Program, we are required by federal law to submit an annual action plan. That's what we have for you this evening. Basically, it is to accept the money that is proposed by the federal government to us, which is roughly a little over $110,000. And that would be programmed, as we have programmed our funds in past years, for infrastructure programs focused in the Park District, which meets the CBPG, the low to moderate income requirement, to focus those dollars in that particular area of town. We have learned that we will be needing to update our consolidated plan as we are part of the New River Valley Consortium. And we will be doing that this year. It's usually a five-year plan. We weren't due to update it for two more years. But we have learned that we will need to do that this year. To run from 2018, in this case, it'll be four years, so 2018 to 2022, to get us in line with the other communities within the New River Valley that have CBPG funds. And so that will provide an opportunity to look at our program if we do so, whether we are continuing to look at infrastructure funds, like the Park Street Sidewalk Project, or if we would like to focus that money towards something else. This year in the annual action plan, we do state that the money is to be allocated towards infrastructure projects such as continuation of sidewalk on Main Street. We have used that money in the past to leverage other funds such as VITA funds. We have not received those funds this year. So we would need to reserve that money that we do receive this year for CBPG to accumulate it for next year in order to leverage it. And hopefully, we'll receive additional money for sidewalk projects in the future on Main Street. But at this point, what is before you is the plan to continue to focus the money towards infrastructure improvements. I'd be happy to answer your questions if you have.
So in the past, we've done work on Runoff Street and then more recently on Park Street, correct?
Correct.
So since the Park Street project wrapped up, have we -- are we banking some funds from the last year, too?
We have banking some funds at this point.
So we're sitting on how much right now?
Well, nothing at this juncture. If this were to be accepted, if the annual action plan were to be accepted tonight, then that would make us eligible to receive the funds for 2018 from the U.S. Department of Health. And then that would then give us that $110,000 balance.
So we don't really, we're not really sitting on anything right now. This is just talking about the future.
Yes, we leveraged it on --
On the sidewalks.
We leveraged it on to finish the Park Street Sidewalk last year.
And one last question. In the plan, like $110,000 isn't a whole lot to do sidewalks. Usually, you know, to get, aggregate some funds. But when's the, or what's our next big section, or significant section going to be?
If you get more than a couple of years' worth of, I guess, money saved up, and they'll be owing you to spend it, so you have to get used to it.
Okay.
The next focus is going to be from, basically, on Main Street, from Park to High Street.
Perfect. Oh, that's wonderful. Yeah, that's a very -- I've heard about that from the first time I ran for office, 2006. That's what I, yeah. There's a path up there now, and that's great. Okay. Thanks for the report. That's a good report.
Anyone else here to address this issue? You should take your name, address, and three minutes.
Christine Walms, 1370 Rigby Street. Over the past year, I've heard from Trey Highland, who does your code enforcement. And he says there are people whose houses are falling down around them, that he wants to condemn their buildings, but there's nowhere for them to go. There's no affordable housing in the area for them. Marie March talked about affordable housing for people that are leaving drug court. And it appears to me that some of this money should be leveraged for affordable housing in the region. And I don't understand, sidewalks are very nice. Don't get me wrong. I walk. I don't drive at all, so I walk. And I understand the importance of walkability. But I also think that it's really important that we start to address some of the infrastructure for people. It just, to me, I don't understand why if we're, the primary purpose is affordable housing and keeping people from homelessness, why we're not using some of this money to go into programs to help people keep them in their houses before their houses fall down around them. And I don't know exactly how, like, I've looked at the program itself, and it says you can't use it for code violations. I do understand that. There are stipulations on the program. But it seems to me we should be able to create some sort of fund or a matching program like you're doing with the downtown facade to help people stay in their houses before they fall down around them in the low to moderate income, which is who this is supposed to help.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Christine Walms, 1370 Rigby Street. You know, looking through this, when a lot of the goals, when it says the percentage of the goals in this program, when it's right in black and white, the percentage of money going to those goals is zero. And in one part of this, it says that staff has seen people on Park Street walking in the grass. This is for the 2018, the new one. Walking in the grass to get to their destinations along Park Street. One whole side of Park Street has a sidewalk on it. If they're walking in the grass, it's because they want to walk in the grass and not in the sidewalk. You know, it may be technically true, but it's very misleading what is going to put in this action plan. You know, I think y'all should, well, I said, take a look at it and see what the stated goals of the plan are and concentrate on that. It's nice that they're going to have nice sidewalks for the homeless people to sleep on.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. We'll move to consent agenda. It consists of three items: approval, council minutes on September 25, 2018. We'll skip down to cancel public hearing on October 9, 2018, for conditional use for re-press by Christiansburg Presbyterian Presbyterian Church for electronic messaging designs to be rescheduled following planning and commission's recommendation. And the other one is a proclamation in support of extra mileage. And there was a sample sent out in your packets. I asked them to change the bottom paragraph to where it is inclusive that the Christiansburg Town Council approves this. It had been written as a proclamation that I approved. But I think this is something that we all should be aware of. And that's it.
Now make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilwoman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stites?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Introductions and presentations. We have Kim Woodrigg, Purchasing Coordinator, coordinator for the town of Christiansburg, to present on the procurement process. Kim, are you ready?
Yeah. I was going to say, there was a few that snuck in after I threw them in the mail.
Thank you, thank you.
For those that don't know Kim, this is Kim Woodrigg. She's our purchasing coordinator. She's been with us for about two years now. She has finished her VCA and her VCO, which is Virginia Contracting Officer and Associate. She's completed both those certifications. And she's going to do the presentation tonight on the Virginia Procurement Act and compliance with it, and more directly on our purchasing policy and small purchase policies for you.
Thank you. You can move it down if you like.
I can usually talk loud enough. Oh, okay, all right. All right, I am here to talk about our purchasing policy and how it works at the town of Christiansburg. Just a little topic overview. I'm going to go over the Virginia Public Procurement Act. I'm going to let you know what it is and how it affects us here at the town. Then I'm going to move on to the procurement methods that are in the Virginia procurement manual. And then I will talk a little bit about buying local. The procurement of goods, services, and construction by Virginia state and local public bodies is governed by the Virginia Public Procurement Act, which is also known as the BPPA. The BPPA can be found in Section 2.2-4300 in the Virginia Code. The town of Christiansburg is required by law to abide by certain methods of procurement. These methods are stated in the BPPA. First, to better understand the rules and regulations permitted by the BPPA, it's helpful to understand the basic purpose of the act, which are to promote attainment of goods and services by the public body of the highest quality, to promote fairness and honesty in the procurement of the goods and services through the use of competition. Then the third is to establish a set of record-keeping and disclosure requirements to promote the free exchange of information in the workplace. There are eight procurement methods, but I'm only going to go over the first three, which should be in red, but you can't quite tell. The first one is competitive sealed bidding. The second one is competitive negotiation. And the third one I'm going to go over tonight is the small purchase procedure. The first one I'm going to talk about is competitive sealed bidding. And this is required for goods or services that are $100,000 and over. Competitive sealed bidding is done by preparing and publishing an invitation for bid, which is also known as an IFB. And when I'm getting together an IFB, we know exactly what we need. So we have a set, we have some set specifications. And the vendors will bid on those specifications. And the lowest bid, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder is the one that wins the contract. Now, a lot of people say, what does a responsible and responsive bidder mean? And the BPPA actually defines a responsible bidder as a person who has the capability in all respects to perform fully the contract requirements. And a responsive bidder means that they have submitted a bid that conforms to all the specifications in the invitation for bid.
So if a company puts in a bid, then you will sort of double-check to see if they are a reliable firm and that they've --
Yes.
What are the different steps you take?
To make sure that they're a reliable firm, first of all, I will check to make sure, to see if we've done business with them in the past. If we have done business, if they've given us a good service or good. And then also, I have to check to make sure they are qualified to do business in Virginia by checking on the SCC website. I will also check to make sure that they have a valid business license and insurance requirements.
But most of these people who put in bids, you're probably familiar with from times past?
Yes.
Majority of the time?
Not always, but majority of the times.
Kim, do they have to show, debarment? Do they have to provide debarment information?
Yes, they do.
I mean, I know if it's a federal requirement, it's also something the town requires?
Yes.
Is to verify that they've not been debarred for a bid?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
The next procurement method is competitive negotiation. And it is also required for purchases of goods and services over $100,000. So in this case, you either pick the competitive negotiation or the competitive sealed bidding. So it's either or. But for anything over $100,000, one of those two is required. With competitive negotiation, it's different than an invitation for bid because we don't necessarily know exactly what we need. We have an idea of what we want, but we don't know exactly. So I will set up a request for proposal, and vendors will submit a proposal, kind of letting us know our best solution, or the best option for the good.
Hey, Kim, could these, could you, Kim, it's like, like, what you would put out for bid, if for this one, plus the first one as well, can you give us an?
Yeah, what's an example of something, sample of something? Process versus something you guys are good at?
An example of something that comes to mind when I think of sealed bidding is we're looking for a Dodge Ram. We need it to have a certain size engine. And it needs to run a certain way. It needs to be an automatic transmission. So we know exactly what we need when it comes to a vehicle. For competitive negotiation, we're looking for possibly a service that we don't entirely know what we need.
A website, a website, maybe, something like that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, now, is the, is it completely up to you? Or do you, you see what they've made the bids and all of that, then do you go to someone else and say, this is what we received, and this is what's going on?
For a request for proposal, we have a set criteria because an RFP is not based on price. Just because they have the lowest price doesn't mean that they're going to be the best proposal. So we set selection criteria with weights in advance. So the bidders know exactly what they're being graded on. And we will form a selection committee. And from there, we will grade the proposals. So that's the difference kind of between the two. It's not necessarily the lowest bidder is going to win with an RFP. It's going to be based on different criteria, such as qualifications.
Let's say the thing is $500,000, okay, whatever it is. Who would be on your committee?
It depends on what the good or, who the good or service is for. If it's for engineering, of course, I'm going to have a couple of engineers on panel. And then I like to have somebody that's kind of outside of that field because they can pick up on things that other people can't. So I like to have a variety of people on the selection committee. But obviously, I'm going to want people on there that know exactly what they're looking for or just what they're talking about.
Thank you.
With the invitation for bid and the RFP, both of those have to be posted for a minimum of 10 days on our website. I like to post them for longer than that, just because the longer that they're posted, more than likely, more people are going to see it. There's going to be more competition. So 30 days is typically the timeframe that I like to get it posted for. This next slide kind of just shows you the difference between the two. With an invitation for bid, typically, it's a quick turnaround time because you know what the low bid is. And as long as they're responsive and responsible, then that's who the contract is going to go to. With an RFP, it does take more time because you've got a panel grading each proposal. And sometimes, we do do interviews and presentations. So that can take a little bit longer. And also, with an RFP, cost could be one of the grading criteria, but it cannot be, it cannot be weighted the most. So it could be a criteria that's not going to be, that's not going to be up there. All right, moving on to small purchases. This can be found in our procurement manual, starting on page eight. The Virginia Public Procurement Act broadly exempts purchases under $100,000 from competitive procurement requirements. But to use this exception, the public body must adopt its own written procedures in advance. And they also have to define their small purchase threshold, which for the town of Christiansburg, it's under $100,000. For professional services, there, professional services has its own section in the BPPA, and I won't go into that in too much detail tonight. But the small purchase procedure may be used if the sum does not exceed $60,000. Depending on the cost of the goods or services being procured determines how many quotes I need to get. If the good or service is less than $5,000, then our procurement policy says that I have to get one quote that's shown to be fair and reasonable. I get the question a lot that what, how do I know if it's fair and reasonable when I'm only getting one quote? Well, I can look at past purchases. And a lot of times, I actually go out and get more than one quote if I don't know if it's fair and reasonable. For goods or services that are $5,000 or greater but less than $30,000, may be made after soliciting a minimum of three written quotes. There are times when I have to get a quote over the phone and I document it that way. But nine times out of 10, I want a paper quote. I want a written quote. For goods or services that are $30,000 or greater but less than $100,000, may be made after soliciting a minimum of four quotes. But I do want to point out that anything that's over $30,000, I do look at going an invitation for bid or a request for proposal. Just because when you're getting in that dollar range, you want to have as much competition as possible. And if you're just going out for four quotes, I can pick those four people that I can go out to. But when I post an invitation for bid or an RFP, everybody can see that, and everybody gets a fair chance to bid on it, so.
Mrs. This is a great presentation. I want to verify, so this, starting with this page, everything else before is sort of like state law?
Yes, yes.
That's, okay, and then starting here, this is Christiansburg's policy?
Yes.
Okay, because this is under $100,000, and this is what we do, but this is not necessarily state law? It's part of that caveat that said we have to have our own policy?
Yes.
That's very helpful. Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I was understanding what I'm hearing.
You are correct.
Good presentation.
I do want to really highlight this slide. For small purchases, vendor contact with the purchasing agency is key since sometimes there will not be a formal bid proposal. So the small purchase policy really benefits local businesses the best because if I know that you offer a commodity or service that we need, I'm going to come to you for a quote. So I really need to know who offers what and where I can go for a quote. So that kind of brings me to my next slide. We have discussed a need to buy local when possible. So back in December, I created a form to go out with our lead whole packet. And this form asked for name, phone number, email address, and also what commodities or what services they offer. After I got all these back, and I'm talking, it was a good, it was a good stack. I created a spreadsheet for local vendors, and I sent that out to all the directors. I really emphasized to the directors that we need to buy local if we can. But it doesn't necessarily mean that if we buy local, we're going to get the best deal. So what I tell the directors to do is at least go out and get one or two local quotes. If it's something that is offered in the community, we need to be getting a quote for it. But if it is higher, then of course, we do have to go for the lower quote, regardless whether it's in the town of Christiansburg, or Richmond, or anywhere else. I do want to stress, if anybody wants to be put on the local vendor list, please let me know. These are just small businesses in the town of Christiansburg. So this spreadsheet does not have businesses from Blacksburg, Floyd, anywhere else but Christiansburg. And this is the list that I go to when I go out to get quotes. I want to know if anybody in the community offers at first. Give me a call, shoot me an email, stop by a town hall just to introduce yourself. I have left some business cards up here. You just want to grab one. And just to recap what I've talked about tonight, all localities are required by the state of Virginia to abide by the BPPA. Competitive sealed bidding and competitive negotiation are required over $100,000, either or, one of those two. In order to be exempt from those competitive requirements, each locality must adopt their own purchasing policy. The town of Christiansburg tries to purchase local when possible as long as the cost is low and the quality is high. Of course, we want to keep the business in our community if we can. Anyone looking to get on that local vendor list, just let me know. If there's any questions?
What's the worst part of your job?
What's the worst part about my job? Oh, you put me on the spot. Having people call me and ask me for stuff that's already posted online. And I tell them all the time that everything's posted on our website. And that also brings me to something else. I tell people all the time to go on our website and sign up for the notifications because it's very important. I have one guy that stops, that literally stops by my office once a month, asks if we have any business to give them. And I told him, Gerald, I said, you are more than welcome to pick up phone, call me, email me. You don't have to make the special trip every month, but he likes to do that. Some people are old school, and they like that face-to-face contact. They don't want to email me. They don't want to call me. So I told him to go up and sign up for our notifications. And he told me, oh, I don't use the internet, do you? Okay, so if anything comes up, he sticks in my mind. I'm going to remember him. So a lot of times, face-to-face can really come in handy, and I'm going to remember you, so.
I'm going to use a specific example that just came to me. And other council members may remember this. And I've not been put up to this. It just comes into my head. It's a perfect example. So I got a letter as a council member probably a year, year and a half ago. And I won't say the name of the company because I'll probably get it wrong. But it's purchasing hose. H-O-S-E, not pantyhose, but H like hose of some sort. And apparently, they've been providing this to the town. And then apparently, the town had started going outside. But hose is a good example. That's, okay, I'm going to buy three, the town needs to buy $3,000 worth, or they think roughly around $3,000 worth of hose?
Right.
For whatever. So, and there's, let's say that there's more than one. How would you go about buying hose? And Jim actually was here. Yeah, but, okay, you got to buy hose. I'm going to put you on the spot, but how would you handle purchase like? That's a good example of something that's kind of, you know, through my hands. And I never looked, you know, I did not, anyway. How would you do that?
Well, first of all, I have to do my research. I have to know really whoever's looking for hose. Well, they have to tell me a little bit more. Is there a certain color you want? Is there a certain length you want? So I really have to get as much information as I can.
From your internal client, which would be like Jim or something like that? Let's pretend Jim's got a perfect list of what kind of hose he needs. And he gives it to you, and he says, okay, we need to buy this. So how do you handle that?
Um, what I would do is, first of all, I would do my research, see who sells it in the area. And then I kind of branch out a little bit. We do have a website in the state of Virginia called Eva that I can go on, and I can do a quick quote. And it's really fantastic because all I have to do is just put the requirements, what I'm looking for, and it shoots it out, depending on your commodity code, what you're looking for, to everybody that signed up for that commodity code. Now, that can be good, that can be bad. Because just today, I did one, and it got emailed to 550 people. So not everybody's going to email me back. But you really just have to do your research to know who sells that product. And that's the first step I take.
But if it's a smaller order-type thing, like you said, we're, we are doing what we can do to buy or purchase locally.
Absolutely.
And I understand that as the dollar values go up, you know, that it can be more, but, okay.
When the dollar value goes up, you really love that competition to ensure that you're getting that best price.
And so your conversations sort of change at $5,000, right? And then again at $30,000?
Yeah.
The, your approach, is that, that's what I'm gathering? Is that a correct inferment?
Now, like I said, if, if the good or service is under $5,000, I want to know if it's fair and reasonable. And if we've never bought it before, I'm not going to know if it's fair and reasonable. So I usually go out and get more than one quote.
But you try to do that as local as possible?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. It was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Tariffs, are they affecting us at all? The Trump's tariffs that he's put up, which are?
No, no.
No idea yet. Construction costs.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
And Kim, I like what Brad said. It's a great presentation. But since you sent out the packet to all the small businesses in the area with the bipolar, with the bipolar packet or the request for information. And you disseminated that out to the --
and you disseminated that out to the department heads, have you seen an increase in purchasing local?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not looking for specific figures, but has there been significant increase, a slight increase?
It's been a slight increase, but we're certainly working on it. When I get a purchase requisition, I make sure that they do at least go out and get a quote local, and if they don't, I go back to that person and I ask why. Is it something that you just, you could not find local? Is it something that you dealt with in the past, and you know by buying local, it's going to be more, or? So I'm always asking questions, not getting a quote local.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Kim, this was great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Pleasant presentation.
Next, we have Kevin Carpenter, assistant to the town manager, present on the IT department.
Thank you for honoring me to chat with you tonight. I'm here to kind of give you an update about what we've been doing in IT. That also includes radio communications for the town. So IT and radio com consist of these folks, Charles Burris, some of you may have worked with him. He primarily handles the desktop-related stuff, installing software, configuring printers, that sort of thing. Eric Vaughn is my network systems administrator. He handles the higher-level server configurations, that sort of thing. And Pete Aslip, he is primarily in our radio com shop. He handles everything from vehicle installs, from, you know, the cages that goes into a new car, to the mobile data terminals, to lights, that extends over even to the fire department rescue squad, he does a lot of that stuff. In addition to the radio systems, the backend infrastructure, the two-way mobiles, that sort of thing. And then myself, which I give most of the credit to them, because they, they get put to work quite a bit. So what makes up IT? The things, I guess, we support about 14 different locations. This includes things such as town hall, the rec center, aquatic center, and public works, but even some things such as some of our pump stations, our radio towers, water tank sites, that sort of thing, where we may have technology, whether it's cameras or sensors, that sort of thing. We have about 300-ish users on our network, so you guys are all, hang down, are all considered users on our network. We've kind of seen an uptick in that, either with, you know, part-time folks that may be working at the rec center or aquatic center. We've been making or giving them more user accounts, so we can keep in better contact with some of these employees, sometimes do some better training, and when they have an email account or their own user accounts, that kind of helps. So we've been seeing a slight uptick in that as we reach out. Desktops, laptops, that's been pretty steady, stable. We're pretty much a one-to-one relationship shop, so we've got an employee who has a desktop or has a laptop, that sort of thing. Servers, kind of the same thing, we've been, we stay busy. And so, but that number's been steady, as we look to moving some things to the cloud when it makes sense. And then mobile devices, this has certainly been a huge growth for us, especially over the last five, six years. Now iPhone, when it came out in 2007, that started to put a hurt on a lot of IT departments, because now everybody's got a smartphone, it's not like the BlackBerrys of before. You know, as an example, I don't know, two or three years ago, we did 30 or 35 tablets out in public works to help better support their work order management system, so their guys can have access to the system out in the field. That was a pretty big deployment all at one time. And again, most of our employees are carrying around a laptop or desktop, and they've got a phone or an iPad on their hip. Network devices, a lot of things get incorporated into there, and 300 may not even touch it. But again, it's things such as your desk phone, your printers, TVs, you know, we've heard the buzzword of Internet of Things, or IoT. We haven't gotten into a lot of that, you know, at least I'm not aware of any, you know, Amazon Echo dots on people's desks, or that sort of thing. But at the end of the list, you'll see HVAC and SCADA. We've got a lot of our HVAC that sits on our network, so things can be looked at remotely, can be done remotely, whether it's cooling this room, you know, over, you know, if somebody's at home, it's like, "Hey, it's really warm in here, let's cool it down," we have those capabilities. Same thing, I guess, with SCADA. A big project over in our wastewater treatment plant, where they're getting more data, it's getting put on the network, so they can view it remotely, control things, keep an eye on stuff. And in terms of help desk, that's pretty much everybody supports that service request. We get about 1,200 or so a year. Now, the majority of those things are your quick five to 30-minute fixes. Hey, this application messed up, you know, let's do a quick reinstall, give me a configuration change. But also in the service requests, we have some projects in there. So some of our projects may be 40 hours that we have, but we want a place where somewhere we can log, somewhat log that time to kind of see how things change over time. Recent projects, so again, we stay pretty busy. As you saw, how many service requests are up there, that is our, for the most part, our day-to-day. So, you know, somebody from finance or the police department, they say, "Hey, something's not acting right, I'm getting this error screen." That's what makes up the majority of our day, and could easily make up 100% of our day. But with SAP and sometimes to, you know, keep going on projects and that sort of thing, we need to step away from the help desk and concentrate on projects to keep things going. So these are the things that we try to step away from that help desk to get over to. Microsoft Office 365, this is something that we recently implemented, certainly affected you all in how you receive your email. This is one of those services where we went from having email on-prem to, to the cloud. So there's certainly more to come with it. The initial part of the project was email and Skype, you know, link or Skype for Business, we use that as an internal chat client, collaboration, that sort of thing. The next three bullet points kind of go together, sorry, they're kind of small, but, you know, the IT assessment, that's something that we did about two years ago. We brought a company in to kind of take a look at our infrastructure, best practices, that sort of thing, how are we doing as an organization? Really good results out of that. Honestly, it's probably something we can do a presentation all on its own. The, you know, the very executive, executive summary is that we do a lot of stuff, we've implemented a lot of good and best practices, we have trouble keeping up with a lot of it. So we brought in some great tools, we're just having trouble keeping those tools going. We also brought in the Virginia Army National Guard to do a security assessment. That was pretty cool, that was brach charge, it's a program that's run, I guess out of the government's office here the last several years. We were fortunate enough to get put on the list, we all kind of do some good collaboration, actually, all of us in the county got to have it done. And so that was pretty neat. So they looked at things like, such as some basic physical security. You know, we walked to some of our, to the water plant, to some of our water tanks and stuff like that, just to say, "Hey, is the gate locked? You know, this is some critical infrastructure, let's make sure that it's secure." They did some basic social engineering, you know, they posed as the IT desk and called a couple of users to say, "Hey, I'm trying to get into your computer, you know, to fix a couple of things, can you let me know what your password is?" Legit, we would never ask for your password, we don't want to know what your password is. And fortunately, you know, it went pretty well, you know, most folks, partly because we're a small shop, "Hey, you don't sound like Adam, you don't sound like Eric or Charles." No, that's, you know, click, so that was good. And so, but then they also looked at things about, "Hey, how are we doing on the applications keeping things up to date?" You know, new versions continually come out, there's a reason they come out, security updates. That's one thing that we got hitting pretty good on, is we have trouble keeping all of these versions up to date. Same thing a little bit with the SQL assessment. SQL is around our databases, we broke that out specifically, we actually had Microsoft come in, fortunately, on their dime, to kind of look at our infrastructure. One of the big things around it was seeing if they could take some of our environment, move it to the Microsoft cloud. Unfortunately, no, we can't. Most of the vendors that we work with were not willing to support if we were to move our infrastructure into the Microsoft Azure cloud right now. Things may change, but sometimes that's the difficulty in moving up there, is vendor support. Another big thing actually came out of these assessments that were just before, Windows Server Update Schedule, it may seem somewhat minor, but it was very important to us to start that this year. We actually shifted, Eric, our network systems administrator, we shifted his schedule, so one day a week, he works the late shift. So when most of the systems are, most of the folks are off the systems, so he can update those after hours. The downside to that is, now I don't have sysadmin during the day, but this was something that was critical, that we needed to start doing on a much more regular basis. A finance system upgrade, that was in part needed due to some support that we were going to start losing, but we were also bringing in time and attendance software. And so with those kind of tying in together, we wanted to make sure that we were pretty well-covered through support through that transition, so. A backup and recovery system, one of the big things that we were looking to do was get our data outside of the region. We have a backup data center, but it sits within the Town of Christiansburg. One of the big goals that we wanted to get out of it was moving our data outside of the region. So, you know, think about the hurricane, you know, if we had gotten hit maybe with that hurricane as badly as, you know, early reports were, I don't know, both of our data centers could have been wiped out, again, both within the Town of Christiansburg. But the system, we were allowed to shift our data, shift most of our data, or actually all of our data, up into a data center that's in Northern Virginia.
Hey, Adam?
Yes?
In case that would happen, what would you do?
That's the next phase of this.
Okay.
So, our data is up in a Northern Virginia data center. The next piece of this project that we're working on right now is, what does it take to flip a switch to now run from that data center? So we did an initial test, depending on how you look on it, it didn't go well, but I'd like, it was our first time going through it. We have never tried to flip a switch and run out of a data center across the state, so we've got a lot of work on our end to do, and it's just, you know, some configuration errors and stuff like that. So should something happen to this data center here, whatever it is, a fire, a hurricane, a cyber attack? Okay, let's shut this place down, you know, and then, you know, getting that disaster recovery run book. So here, here's step one, here's step two, and eventually to the step to say, "Okay, well, we can continue to accept water bills, we can continue to push out work orders and that sort of thing." So that's, that's going to be another big phase in a lot of time, but again, a big piece of this initial project is, hey, let's get this data out of, out of the region just in case.
And that goes, with everything on the server, if it was crashed, then you got it up there then?
Correct, and we, and we still have backups locally, we still have that sort of capabilities. Or if our data center here at town hall goes down, we can still fail over to our, our inside-the-town DR center. But again, it's the, okay, it's, our backup data center sits a mile from here, so if something were to happen to both, we could, that's what we're working towards, flip a switch so we can run from somewhere else.
Okay.
Smaller projects, which are mostly contractor engagements, I guess, we did, redid some wiring, you know, not very sexy projects, I guess, you know, at our PD, in our rec center, just old cabling, new locations, you know, the PD went through a big change over with their, you know, top floor construction, so kind of at that time, we, yeah, we, it was a, it was a rat's nest of cabling, as you might call it, so we redid a lot of that. A managed print services agreement, that primarily focuses on our copiers, once again, not a very pretty project, but we had so many different vendors in the Town of Christiansburg that were providing print services to us. You know, the PD had their own contract, the fire department had a couple of their own things, we had four or five different vendors providing these devices to us. But even with those same vendors, we had different contracts, because we may have bought this copier at a different time, but we got it at another person, and so everything was all at the same. So finally, after years, we were able to kind of even them out a little bit, did a couple of buybacks, and now we have all of our managed print, all of the larger copiers at least, all through one vendor. That way, when it comes up for renewal, we'll have a really good idea of exactly what we're paying, and everything's under one contract to, you know, try to streamline a few things, so. The next one is that microwave radio links, and that was primarily handled through P out of our radio com side. That was pretty much putting in some backbone radio links to clear up some commercial frequency noise that we were getting. So like our rescue squad and some other departments who are operating their mobile radios on a business band frequency, which gave us very little protection from interference and that sort of thing. So by migrating over to these radio links that are government-specific, it would allow us to clean up some frequencies, give us a little bit better coverage, because we don't have that bleed-in from another radio system.
Yeah. Yeah, I hate to keep asking stuff, when you buy computers or copiers or whatever, do you work with Kim on that?
Yes, we're, we're pretty good friends.
Okay.
There's not too many things that I don't need to get multiple calls on. $5,000 doesn't go a very long way for me to purchase one thing. I may be buying two or three computers, you know, for less than 5,000 bucks, or I might be buying one ruggedized laptop for the PD, maybe that for 5,000 bucks sale. We're pretty good friends. And we, and that even kind of continues to evolve a little bit, because one of the things that you may have seen, this might be a little more procurement-related, is services. So a lot of times, so like this backup and recovery system that I did, I'm going to maybe make up a number, but let's say we're going to pay them $20,000 a year. Well, that threshold that we talked about, that $30,000, doesn't necessarily apply to that $20,000, because over the course of that contract, it's going to be $100,000 or whatever it is, because if we want the contract to be three, four, five, six, whatever, however many years, we need to add up the total length of that contract by the dollar amount, and that's, will make a difference on which method we chose. So for that one in particular, we did an RFP. We didn't know where it was going to come, whether it was going to be $2,000, $50,000 one time, or if it was going to be $200,000 over the five years, so. But it gets a little more complicated when you're buying software that has renewals year after year after year, threading up the total, total number of years in the contract. And the last thing I will mention is security awareness training. So again, this was something that kind of came out of our assessments, is to better educate our users on the dangers of emails, the internet, that sort of thing. It is something that we now require all employees that have a computer account to go through. It's about a 45-minute training, they're required to go through it annually. If they don't do it, well, they don't get on the network anymore. So I've had very good support from management on that, which is fantastic. It's just, it's a checkbox sometimes for your risk management call, to say, "We're better educating our users." And so we're a little more than a year into it, maybe about 16 months or so, and, you know, some grumblings going on right now, because most users are getting ready to go back through it, which is why I'm going to offer it up to you guys now. Planning Commission as well, I would love to include you all into our security awareness training. We have partnered with a company by the name of Know Before. They, we got approached by them several years ago, sorry, maybe I approached them, and it's a, it's a, again, just a way to better educate our employees about the risks and the dangers of, you know, clicking on that link, or, or sharing passwords, or using a password on your Facebook account compared with your Town of Christiansburg account. There's a lot of dangers into that, and we have some, you know, unfortunate examples of why that is a really bad thing. And so, again, we have users, every user that comes onto the account right now, they're required to go through that training. So it's okay, in the next few days, or maybe week or so, you may be getting an email from me about signing up for this Know Before account. You know, I, I don't think I'll kick you guys off the network if you don't get through it, but I would really encourage you all to, to go through it. Again, it's, it's a learning opportunity. Some of you, if you work on a larger network, I'm not sure if they do this over at TEP or not, you may be required to go through it every year, so I would really love to extend that to you guys in Planning Commission, so you can kind of see what the rest of the employees are going through as well and educate them. And this is what's kind of coming up, this is my last slide, I guess. So you guys are familiar with the GIS assessment that's going on. Thank you for all the comments that, that did come over. Again, the company, Timmons kind of took all this information together, we're kind of doing some backend work to kind of filter and pare this down about a roadmap moving forward, I'm sure there will be another conversation coming up. Another thing that's on our radar is this DR risk management assessment. So the question was asked is, you know, what do you do if something happens? You know, we don't have a formalized disaster recovery plan right now. You know, we have an emergency operations plan that maybe talks about using the rec or these other places as a, as a shelter in place, but we don't have anything formalized for, okay, what happens to the IT side of things if that hurricane hits?
How come we don't have one formalized now?
It's, it's on the list, you know, it's just one of those things that...
I would think that should go to the top of the list.
I would, yes. Again, it's, it's one of those things, we've been trying on it for a couple of years, it's time. And it's, and it's stuffed out, you know, it's kind of back burner stuff, even though it should be front burner, but it's, it's just tough to get to. So it is a priority of ours. In addition to that, we plan to take the approach... In addition to that, we plan to take the approach of for cyber attacks as well. You know, you can just open up, you know, any news, any news site, and somewhere on that list of top 10 things that have been going on, you'll probably hear of a cyber attack somewhere. The, the likelihood of us getting a cyber attack is probably much greater than our data centers getting wiped out from a hurricane. So we want to be better prepared for that sort of thing. Then the next is an ERP or Business Technology Review. This is a goal that is in our, in our 2022 plan. So this is kind of to take a look at all the applications that we use across as part of our workflow in the way that the town does business. So we have a financial system, you know, that does, you know, finance things, you know, utility billing, you know, payroll, all that sort of thing. And then we have work order management systems out of Public Works or building inspection software. But none of these things really tie in very well together. They're kind of separated, they're isolated, they're siloed, and we want to get that information flowing a lot better. So we're going to go and we're going to end up doing an assessment so we can figure out how we can make, how can we make this stuff work better together. Maybe it's just some workflow things that we need to change, or maybe it's different software. But that's what we're going to take a look at. And then last, certainly not least, is a phone system expansion and/or replacement. You know, it's, right now, the primary reason we started looking at it is because our police department and our wastewater treatment plant are on their own separate phone systems just from years ago. We haven't brought them in or migrated them in to what the rest of the department uses. So we were going to originally bring them in, but now starting to take a look at some of the other technology that's out there. And our, and our phone system is about eight years old. It was designed eight years ago with the, when we brought in the Aquatic Center. So there's some pretty big configuration changes we want to do to our phone system. And so the idea was, all right, well, if we're going to look at configurations, configuration changes, in addition to bringing in the police department and wastewater treatment plant that will double the size of our phone system, why don't we see what else is out there just to kind of, you know, see, see what's out there? It's been eight years since we reviewed it, and so the guts of it, I guess, if you will, are about eight years old and more. And there's certainly a lot more things, but those are going to be some, some pretty big time intensive things to, to go through. So then the last is, do you have any questions? Any pain points, anything that we can better provide to you all or help you? I'm certainly happy to answer, or whatever you guys.
For all of us, the whole place here, when do you think you can have the first draft available for the disaster recovery plan?
I don't, hey, I don't have an RFP draft yet. That is, that is one that in terms of priority, and again, I don't disagree that it should be at the top of the list right now. But there are some major infrastructure issues that we are trying to correct before we can even get to that. And there are also things that would, will probably change that plan. So it, it's something that is on this fiscal year's docket, I guess. So there are funds that are appropriated this fiscal year, so it'll, it'll happen this fiscal year.
You know, you can also get with the, the, you know, VRC to help you, you know, to fight that.
Yeah, I've chatted with them about it in the past. And so they are one of those that's, that's out there. And I, it's something I would probably like to do an RFP for, just because there's some nuances that I want to make sure that a lot of folks are looking at. I've seen a lot of DR plans, but a lot of the DR plans don't include a cyber component to it, which is something I, I want to make sure is included as part of it.
Okay, thanks.
Is there a difference between your IT recovery plan manual and the disaster recovery plan that Harry's talking about?
IT recovery plan?
You had that a few slots back, are you including that as in a full disaster plan for the town in case?
Do you mean backup and recovery system?
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
You said you were working on it. That's, there's a difference in the two.
Yes, so this backup and recovery system is a, is a box that is actually backing up the software and shipping it up to Northern Virginia, and it has that cut spit in. So that is the technical component of it. The DR plan is more of that run book to say, if this happens, this is what you can do. This is what you're doing well, this is what you need to, to do better. You know, here are some risks associated with the way that you currently have things. So that, that DR plan is also, again, an assessment to be able to say, hey, you've got two different data centers going on right now. You also have this third piece now that we've introduced with the Northern Virginia component of it. Well, we need to make sure all the data centers stay in sync. You know, that's, that's a risk that we have, that we need to attend to. You know, it's great that we have two data centers, but that means we also have two data centers to support, to upgrade, to make sure that they're in sync and that sort of thing.
But the recovery plan will just be a part of the disaster recovery plan?
Correct, yes.
That's right. What I'm referring to is like, if this place were to explode, blow up, okay, we need a plan that shows who had computers, what kind of computers they had, what programs they had on it. That's just one portion of it. And your IT stuff would, you know, that kind of thing.
Correct.
And we need to keep the book offsite, so if this place blows, you know, we still got the book.
Right.
Yeah.
You're, you're definitely right.
So I kind of look at those different. So when do you think you'll have the recovery system manual done? You said you're working on it now.
So it's this, it's this fiscal year. So our, our DR assessment, our DR plan is this fiscal year.
Okay. And Randy, I take it you guys are working on a disaster recovery plan for the whole town right now?
We have a version of management plan.
Right. So that's already established and updated?
Correct, we have it annually.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next on the agenda, citizens' comments, for anyone that would like to address council, can you do so? Same guidelines, name, address, and your comments, three minutes. Anyone here that would like to address council? There are none, I will close with citizens' comments. We will go to committee reports, street committee.
Yes, we have one plat to approve or to consider for approval. It's one that council took action on. When was our original action on that, Randy? Mr. Wingfield, when was our action to approve that?
It was December of 2017.
It's CUP.
December of 2017.
December, so 10 months ago, council approved a CUP for a planned unit development at End of Blade Road, which I'm stopping until it comes up on the screen.
Okay. So it's at the very end of Blade Drive. It's a 59-watt planned unit development, again, that this council approved 10 months ago. This is the plat that we, the street committee has reviewed. All of the conditions and all of the conditions for the planned unit development have been
fulfilled on, and are reflected on this plat. The developer is one that has done some other work here in the town. Seneca Springs out off of Christianville Road, and this project is going to be very similar to that. The street committee has reviewed this and found it to be consistent with our subdivision ordinance. And again, it has been reviewed by the staff for all of the particulars as far as the layout in conformance with what council has already approved 10 months ago. And so the street committee recommends approval of this plat as presented, and that recommendation is made in the form of a motion.
I second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, I'm glad I voted on this 10 months ago, but I, I think this is very good. The town, town needs things like this, maybe for retired couples maybe, or people who, not many, if you go one and two bedroom type places and a little patio, and I think this is something that we're going to need more and more. And I think it's good that we can, we're doing a little here.
And I agree with that. That's something the regional commission's doing a study on. It seems like there's been a shortage in our area. Harry, you being on there, you've heard them talk about that a few times, where they want to get an assessment on what's out there for retirees. These patio homes are very popular, and it's good to see that, you know, a development like this, or a continued development like this by this builder is occurring in town.
It's completely unrelated, and they're getting ready to take action on. Was my motion seconded?
Yeah.
Just for example, a very similar development, this is a bill as a Pepper's Ferry that was developed by a group out of Richmond, and that has exceeded all of their pro formas, the build out of that, and it just, they've sold. And I think as we move into the future, this, you know, there's, like you say, this is the type of development that is, makes wiser use of our undeveloped land because you're serving more people in the same amount of area. It's not sprawl, it's core development, and I think this type of development is, you see a lot more of this within our community. Again, it's, it's able to fit more people in with the undeveloped land that we have.
And it's more than just retirees, from what I'm understanding, a lot of millennials who are first buying, first time home buyers are looking to these type of developments as well.
And I take it there's adequate green space here?
There is two recreation areas. It does meet the open space requirements, so there are recreation, park area at the end of the street.
Yeah, when they turn their plans in, the engineering department here, they ensure that that is true.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We, we actually live in one of these developments, and there is a mix of people. There are a lot of retirees, but there's also law enforcement. We have college professors, there's a lot of millennials, yeah. And people have actually moved around the same neighborhood that are millennials. It's very interesting.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Let us sit down, thank you very much.
That is the only action by street committee.
Okay. Discussion about an action by mayor and council, or council action on 2018 town of Christiansburg community development block grant annual action plan?
I make a motion that we approve the 2018 town of Christiansburg community development block grant annual action plan.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Let us sit down, thank you. Jury?
Yes.
You got a group to introduce us to tonight?
Yes, we do. We have three members here tonight for our Board of Building Code Appeals. Sitting beside me is Rich Alves, JD Price, and John, sorry, John Travis, that's Indian girl. Chris Foal was unable to be here tonight, we'll get him back at one of our next few meetings and get him through as well.
Okay. Thank you. So I have a motion.
I make a motion to reappoint Rich Alves, JD Price as board of Building Code Appeals for four-year terms ending in December 31st, 2022, and reappoint John Travis as an alternate to the board of Building Code Appeals with terms ending December 31st, 2021.
I second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like one brief question. Mr. Price, I know is an architect, and the other two gentlemen, what is your backgrounds to serve on this board, just out of interest?
I say contractor.
Okay.
Whitechapel contractor in Christiansburg for 40 some years.
Excellent. Very good.
Very good, thank you guys.
Thank you for coming, sir. We like to know who's, and now we recognize you and Kroger, or where we, where we might be. We do appreciate it.
For warning guys, turn and run in Kroger.
No, this, but appreciate you taking time to come down here and, because we're all a team.
And we appreciate all the work that you do for us, and I know that sometimes you have your hands full, and, and we really appreciate it.
So we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Let us sit down, thank you. Staff reports, town manager?
It's looking at the whole issue of these profits that are being fixed, so it's a big force needed now, so.
But she was telling me today that I don't think the part is in yet, and it's still going to be a couple of days before they get the heat up to 94 degrees or whatever.
I think it will take a couple of days to get it out, but I think it's been in fog.
Anything else? Mr. County General?
No report, man.
Any other staff here that would like to report tonight? Thank you. Council reports, Ms. Sacks?
All right, central business, there's a meeting tomorrow at noon here in Town Hall, so please attend if you have a chance.
Thank you. Mr. Hubbard?
Talking about the Aquatic Center, they are, Virginia Tech is going to have a swim meet there this weekend, and the three teams that were going to be in it, were going to be Duke, Florida State, and, and Tech. And Florida State has called up and said because of hurricane, they can't make it. But they also contacted me and they were wondering if anybody would be interested in being a timer. The meet is going to start at 11 o'clock on, on Saturday, and they could use a couple more timers, and Susan Brechner is the person to contact. And that's all I have.
Mr. Stipes?
I'd like to thank council for taking action on the park proposal, RFP, at the last meeting in my absence. I'm glad we're moving ahead with that. And from here, from Mr. Nelson, we're doing a very active job of soliciting additional interest in the project, but I just want to thank council for moving that project ahead and moving our process along. And that's it, thanks, Mayor.
Shaw, nothing to report. Mr. Bishop?
I don't have a thing.
Mr. Coe?
I'm good, thank you, though.
Okay. I will remind, remind council of a couple of things. First and foremost, our town picnic is Friday night at Hark Raider.
Correct.
And I will mind and encourage all of you, all of your families to attend. Starts, it runs five to seven?
Four to seven.
Four to seven. Okay. They have a bunch of excellent cooks this year. Mr. Henline, I think is going to be grilling. I think Brad Epley is going to be grilling, and several of us have agreed to serve food to the staff, so lots of door prizes, lots of gift cards and things, so.
Do these cooks need any help?
I think we got the grill covered. Our Jerry's Burgers are excellent.
Okay, okay. So we're good there. The other thing is on Saturday, November the 13th, at the New Valley Mall, we have the Christiansburg Police Department's Fall Festival. We have this every year, obviously around this time, and I think, I want to say that's from 10 to 3, it may be 11 to 4, I'm not, is it 10 to 3 in case?
10 to 3.
Okay, very good. I will also say that I had a meeting, Melissa and I attended a meeting this, yesterday morning with some members of the Army Recruitment Office, and they want to come and become involved and help with the town and do some things, and maybe participate in some of the events. So we're going to work with them as it comes along. The other question I had, and I had earlier this week sent out a, a statement or a letter from, or an email from Coalition Against Big Trucks that are asking us to support the defeat of amendments that would allow bigger, faster trucks. They're looking at, one of the proposals is to increase the weight capacity of a tractor trailer from 71,000 to 91,000 pounds. There are probably 22 organizations that oppose this. National Troopers Coalition, National Sheriff's Association, International Association of Police Chiefs, National Association of Police Organizations, National Association of Emergency Medical Technicians, AAA, National Association of Counties, National League of Cities, National League of Towns and Townships, National Association of County Engineers, and American Public Works Association, US Conference of Mayors, International City County Management Association, or some League of Towns and Townships, National Association of County Engineers, and American Public Works Association, U.S. Conference of Mayors, International City County Management Association, or some of the top ones out of the thing. The, the whole concept is, it is to, and I will say this, the Virginia Municipal League at our annual meeting voted to not to support this amendment for additional truck sizes. They're saying that it could cost additional bridge repairs in the state of Virginia at about $1.1 to $1.7 million because, like they said, probably, Brady may back me up, probably 40% of the bridges in Virginia are mediocre at best.
Trucks are, they've been devastating. The interstate system was not designed for, not the volume nor the weight of these trucks. They're, they're completely devastating the infrastructure system.
One of the things that, that they emphasized, and I've talked with Jim Lantz and Wayne Nelson, is that not only, you know, I realize it's probably, as Brad said, it's probably a little bit out of our scope as a council to get involved on the 81 thing. However, what we have to understand is if we, if these trucks are allowed and the interstate shuts down, and they say there's about a 25% chance of more traffic stoppages and wrecks on the interstate with these larger trucks, then they're all gonna be diverted through our town. And our town and our street structures are not built to withstand the wear and tear. If you see, if you look up at the corner of East Main Street and Franklin Street, the right, those trucks chew those side, those curves up constantly. So-
Hey, can I say something, your mayor?
Sir?
Okay. It's particular case. And usually, in cases like this, I agree with Mr. Stipes and think it's not our purview. In this case, I think it is because the interstate affects us directly here. We got first aid people that work the interstate every day, wrecks, fire departments, wrecks. I've drove the interstate for 25 years myself, and I know what trucks and truck, trailers would do. I mean, if they wanna put trailers on there that share twice the weight, or whatever the weight, there's gonna be a lot of people hurt, you know, in stuff in this case. I mean, it's just, it's just not a smart move, I don't think. And I think we should support to make sure it's not approved.
Okay. They also, they being the Transportation Board, and the National Department of Transportation estimates that could possibly see a 19 to 20% drop-off in freight services by the railroad, which could eventually equate to as many as, I think they said, a 100% increase in the number of trucks, which would go from 4 million to 8 million trucks on the highways. So I have two options. One is, I sent you all a copy of letters addressed to our, to our representatives and the governor and so, and so forth, that with your nod and approval, I can do, or we can put this to the form of a resolution, so we can vote on it and have it, and follow it that way.
Well, I've changed my mind. I sent out a note to everyone about, personally, I'm opposed to the increased weights. Professionally, as a transportation practicing professional, I'm opposed to it, but I did not think it was germane as, as this industrial hemp here in the town. It's not really, why do we need to chime in on something that we don't have a purview over? The mayor has made that germane because these trucks would pass through our community and affect us, so I've changed my position on that, and I support, I will support whatever council's pleasure is, a resolution to be followed. That, that makes it germane, and I agree with Mr. Collins, that changes of discussion, it does affect us, and it is something that we, you know, I'm comfortable taking the position on that.
We, and I can do it one of two ways. The, is the letter samples that I sent out, I can, you know, we'll put in there by unanimous vote, or approval of the town council, we present this, or we can do a resolution. I personally like the letters because I've seen probably another 200 or 300 of those letters that have gone out from Montgomery County, Town of Blacksburg, I think City Radford, most all of our localities around have, have come forward to be against this. So I thought it was a pretty, pretty generic letter that I can put on our new letterhead and get it out the next day.
Let's get the letter. Let's do it.
It's probably, it's a letter better, and as far as we're concerned, if there's no one opposed on council, you can say that we're all agreeing with it.
Okay. I think that's, that's the, I think it's a good approach to take.
You know, Chris, as a private citizen, I think I can speak this for everybody who's been on 81. These trucks already intimidate me no end, and we put these trucks even bigger, it's just, I don't think it'd be good at all, and just cause some serious problems all around.
And if any of you are interested, I'll be glad to scan and email you a copy of the presentation from, at the DML Transportation Committee that I chair. I'll be glad to shoot that out to you, just so you can see what they're looking at, and it's got a list of endorsements and the upsides and the downsides, which are very few upsides. So with that, we'll move on with, we'll move on with that, and I'll take care of it. If you'd like, I'll be glad to attach a copy to each of you.
Okay, that'd be good.
Sounds very good. Is there any other business to come before council tonight? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.